Call the board, Madison District Public Schools. We're at our own meeting, March 2nd, 2020. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Mark Holcomb.
Due to the flag of the United States of America, and the single republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the creation of justice for all.
Okay, do they get a roll call?
Mr. Holcomb?
Here.
Ms. Castle?
Here.
Mr. Kimball?
Here.
Ms. Ah? Here. Mr. Pittman?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
All right, we're gonna deviate just a little bit from the agenda. We're gonna start with Student of the Month. Uh, Leslie, if you could come down.
Okay.
Okay.
How about that? All right, here we go. So, um, good evening, and this is a nice crowd, so this is wonderful to see. Always pleased to honor our Students of the Month. And so tonight, we're gonna start with our female Student of the Month from Madison High School, Madison Preparatory High School, Reyna Horken. Come on up. You can hold this while I say all sorts of nice things about her. So, a compilation of some things that some of her teachers have said about Reyna. She has been a student at Madison Prep for three years. They have had a pleasure watching her mature and grow. She is polite, she is trustworthy, and she is interested and committed in her educational goals. Reyna is well-liked by her peers and is always willing to help others where needed. Recently, she asked for missing assignments from one of her peers that had been out for some time. She is caring, and she is a very responsible adult. Reyna has been on the Honor Roll several times. "I have seen many students expand and grow," one teacher said, "but Reyna has progressed into an outstanding young lady and compares favorably to most." Reyna plans on attending Oakley Community College before transferring to a four-year school in pursuit of a Human Resource degree. Congratulations, Reyna. And now for Madison High School, I'd like to call off Darius Neal. Darius is a hard-working, model student athlete at Madison High School. He has all the qualities you would want in a leader. He is self-driven, hard-working, and responsible. He has been a pleasure to work with, both in the classroom and on the field over the last few years. That was from Mr. Emory. A great leader in the classroom, Darius consistently stays organized and on task. His sense of responsibility and engagement in history is awesome. He is a student I always point to as a great example to others. So excited to see where the future takes you. Thank you for being an exceptional reflection of Madison High School and their student athletes. That's your move.
All right, let's go. On the list in reverse order, Mr. Penn Harwood, Wilkinson Middle School.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. I'm looking out to see if Devon Terowski or Shahrazan Anderson are here. I know, I know Devon was here earlier today. I'm gonna just talk to you about both of them. Our process for Student of the Month was a little bit unique this month for, for March. I, I put the challenge to our, uh, our secretary, Ms. McEwen, and our counselor, Ms. Ing. I said, "I want you to come up with who you think exemplifies our Student of the Month for this month." And before I could even finish the word "month", both of them said Devon Terowski, Shahrazan Anderson, in unison. Let me tell you a little bit about Devon. Devon's the toughest kid I've ever met. He's not the biggest kid, but he's by far the toughest kid I've ever met. He's fought battles that I, I wouldn't wish upon anybody in this room. He doesn't miss assignments, he's battled illness, he's battled back from it. I don't think I've ever heard him say, "I can't," or "I won't," or "no." He was across the stage, across the room earlier today, helping with the basketball game, just to help, to work on the scoreboard. And before he went in, he said, "Mr. Harwood, do I have to pay to get in?" "No, you don't have to pay." But, but there's not one thing he won't do to help. And he exemplifies what it is to be, to be truly tough, to have grades. Uh, he works hard on his grades, he's a better, uh, already a better man than most that I know. Just a genuinely good kid. Uh, so, even though he's not here, can we have a round of applause for Devon? Shahrazan Anderson, we can have a long discussion about whether we deserved the two, I'm told, or the three we got for, for banned, for our festival over the weekend. Uh, she's a phenomenal musician, she's an Honor Roll student, one of our eighth-grade leaders, and if there's a time where I've ever seen her without a smile, I can't remember it. She is universally beloved by all of our teachers and by all of her classmates, and is just a wonderful, wonderful classroom leader. So, Shahrazan, if you're watching, uh, or if you, uh, if you hear it later on, I'm really sorry that you weren't able to join us, but I'd like to do a round of applause for Shahrazan as well.
All right, moving on, let's go with Madison Elementary, Sarah Robinson.
Good evening. Our Students of the Month were chosen by our third-grade teachers this month.
At Madison, our Students of the Month were chosen by our third-grade teachers this month. So I have Celeste Brown come up first and introduce her student.
So, my student is Amarian Colly, so Amarian, come on over here. So, Amarian was chosen as Student of the Month for third grade this year for his leadership qualities. He is consistently kind, thoughtful, and caring to his teachers and classmates. He's hard-working and accepts any challenge willingly. This encourages other students to follow suit, creating a positive attitude amongst the class as a whole. I know that I can always count on Amarian to approach any task with an open mind and a big smile. I can't wait to see him continue to grow as a student and a person. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Now we'll have Megan Haas.
Another third grader we chose is Chloe Stanow. Chloe is kind, thoughtful, patient, intelligent. She's a great student, more importantly, a great friend to others. She gets along with everyone and can help solve conflicts in and outside of the classroom. Chloe comes to school every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn. She's highly motivated and strives for excellence. Chloe's a great representative for the third grade, and I'm honored to be her teacher.
All right, last and, and at least, Mr. Bobby Robinson, Early Child Care Center.
I'm Mrs. Trow, and I am one of the kindergarten teachers over at the ECC Building, and I have three children with me today that I get the honor. I will start with Jayden Rose. Jayden had a rough start when he came to Madison this year. Um, he suffered a great tragedy, but before school started, he had a really hard time at the beginning of the year, and he has overcome it, and he is going at leaps and bounds. Um, it's been a wonderful experience watching him grow and build his confidence throughout the year. One of the greatest parents of kindergarten is getting to watch his grow throughout the year and, um, being able to watch them grow both personally and academically. And he has really taken off in the aha moments, getting good for his teachers. I get to see that every day in this child. Um, he comes to school every day with a smile on his face, ready to learn, and he is one of the most polite kids that I have. So, you're doing a great job. This is King Vardav, and he is a very kind and caring child. He is always respectful and follows the rules and the expectations of the building. Um, he is a leader in our classroom, and his classmates look up to him for guidance and, um, and for help throughout the day. He is very kind, and it has been a pleasure watching him grow both academically and personally. Um, he started out the year shy and quiet, and now he is a leader in the room, so it's great to see. He comes to school every day with a smile on his face, and he's ready to, ready and eager to learn every day. So, good job. This is, um, Zoe Jackson. She is both beautiful inside and out. Um, she's very kind, very sweet, very respectful, very polite, um, to everybody. Everybody in the building, the adults and her classmates. She also came in very shy this year, and it's been great to see her blossom. Zoe comes to school eager to learn every day, and she always does her best. This is a child that I can give them an assignment, and she will go above and beyond. If I ask them to write one sentence, she comes up with four or five. She always pushes herself, so she's self-motivated, and she does a great job. She's made a lot of friends this year and is an asset to our district. We have really enjoyed having her in my class this year, and she's doing a great job.
All right, next we have the Superintendent's Report from Mr. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Always nice to, um, see students get recognized, and if we wanna, uh, allow those families that came here to recognize the students a moment to step up, and we appreciate you coming here and supporting your students. Part of my Superintendent's Report is we are signing up for a Career Day that we're trying to partner with some construction unions. And we have, uh, I would like to give some of my time to a representative, uh, from Career Day, John Hartwell. I'm gonna pass the mic over to him, and he's gonna talk a little bit about, um, what Career Day is. And our hope is to have the middle school and the high schools sign up for Career Day, and he'll speak a little bit about the importance of manufacturing and what we could do to provide as many different avenues for students that are not interested in pursuing the college track but still have an opportunity to pursue different avenues. Mr. Hartwell?
Thank you. Um, thanks for having me in tonight. I'm actually, I'm an operating engineer. And operating engineers, I could operate all the heavy equipment you see on the highway jobs, the bridge jobs, anywhere in Michigan. There's 14,000 of us in the state of Michigan out of local 324. So I'm here to talk to you a little bit about registered apprenticeships through the Department of Labor. We're gonna actually do our Construction Career Days, which will be May 6th and 7th. We do it in Howell, Michigan, at our training center. We have 555 acres there in Howell. We'll have all 12 of the construction trades represented for apprenticeship. Apprenticeship is the other four-year degree, right? But how much do you pay for apprenticeship? Generally, an apprenticeship like mine, I have, I offer two apprenticeships, one for heavy equipment mechanics, which is a four-year apprenticeship, and one for heavy equipment operator, which is a three-year apprenticeship. Zero. We charge zero for it. It's all done through collective bargaining, through our contractors, and through our members. It's like getting a full-ride scholarship to college, and these are careers, these are careers that pay six figures. They pay six figures, they play, they pay health care benefits, a couple pensions, which you don't hear about a pension much anymore. They're viable, they are obtainable for your students. And with the crumbling infrastructure in Michigan, they need tradesmen, and women in these trades. They're not exporting our jobs. They will import workers if we don't train enough, right? So we wanna make sure that enough young people are trained to come into the trade, fill that skills gap, and make sure that it keeps prospering. So what I'll have at Construction Career Days is I'll have each trade out there that will have a hands-on piece for the students. I'll have over 50 pieces of heavy equipment manned by retirees and apprentices that the students can operate. They actually put 'em on, go to the website, michiganconstructioncareerdays.org, or go to Massey Michigan Apprentice Steering Committee, Inc., dot org, and look at the videos. You'll see the students out there operating equipment. It's a great opportunity, it is viable, and we get students from all over the state into these apprenticeships. And I think that we are missing part of the public if we're not throwing that opportunity out to the students. So thank you for allowing me some time today. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'm gonna leave some information with the Superintendent, and thank Mark Holcomb for contacting me.
Thank you, Mr. Harwood. Um, some other announcements that we have, um... You know, I, I try to get the student voice, I try to get, uh, student perception when I try to go around to hear what the students have to say. I met a high school student to hear their complaints and what they like and what they don't like. Uh, but we were lacking student council in every building. Um, so I just received word that Madison Elementary started, um, a student council club. So when I go there, I can actually hear from the students what they like, what they don't like. They're complaining about the food, they're gonna let me have it, the food is terrible, the kids will be the first ones without being biased. I know if I listen to the parents, they'll twist things, but the kids will just tell me how it is. Um, so, figure the more that we could get student input on, on information, the better decision-makings we could provide for the district. Um, so I, I appreciate Madison Elementary doing that. The high school already had them, middle school is reviving theirs in student council, uh, because really, every building should have a student governing body to be able to speak for everyone else. I also wanna, um, talk about March Reading Month. I know the elementary's doing, um, a big, uh, promotion during March Reading Month, and they're partnering with the PTO to provide first 100, um, students or families with a free book, so a big shout-out to the PTO. They, I'll just tell you, as a parent, I don't see in Troy, and hopefully Troy doesn't watch this, I don't see as much activity as what I see in this district or what PTO does. I mean, they go above and beyond, from dances, uh, to fundraising. I mean, they do it all, yeah, so they should get a, a big... I know some feel that I micromanage them, but I try not to. Uh, but again, the first 100 students or families will get a free book, and this is on March 26th. Also, uh, Kindergarten Roundup, for those of you, if you have neighbors that are exploring, um, Schools Kindergarten Roundup is March 18th at 5:30. Uh, so encourage you to get the word out to, if you have a neighbor or a friend that's, you know, provide, show them if they would like a tour of what we provide. My phone number's on the website, I'll be happy to do a tour for anyone that's interested. And I just wanna, um, highlight a few things that the city's partnering with us on, that you might not necessarily see. Uh, I'm not sure if you've heard of Ellie's House. Ellie's House, uh, addresses human trafficking. Uh, and I know a lot of districts are really trying to fundraise for Ellie's House. I know, uh, Troy, they owe like $50,000. We're doing something to try to fundraise for Ellie's House. Uh, but they are working with Wilkinson Middle School, which is a big thing. Growing up, you, you wouldn't think about, uh, human trafficking, but it's, it's a big thing right now, uh, in what they're doing. And, um, partnering with the city and Ellie's House is phenomenal. You might not necessarily see it, but this is happening in the schools where we are educating our students. We're also educating them on mental health. Uh, we are addressing them through either art therapy or yoga therapy, or Renewed, which is a mentoring program to, um, deal with mental health, which is a big, a big thing. Growing up, we didn't have the, the obstacles and the barriers that the little ones are going through now. We didn't have social media. I mean, beepers were just coming into play when I was in school. So, now social media and what the, the, um, the peer pressure that students are going through is totally different than when we were growing up. So anything that we could, any tools that we could do to empower them, uh, we're trying, so, uh, just wanna highlight that. Also, wanna congratulate Max Burke. He, uh, almost got to state. I think he was wrestling 189. We were district champs partnering up with Foley in our wrestling team, so a big shout-out to the wrestling team. I wrestled 205, and so, uh, great job, guys. Again, if we're district champs. And, uh, Max, correct me if I'm wrong, almost got to states, won individuals, and regional, so congratulations if you see him. And I believe this concludes my overall report. Mr. President?
And we move into Board of Education Action Regulations. It is recommended the Board of Education approve minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting held on 2/10/2020 in the Board of Education Training Session held on the 2/25/2020. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Discussion?
I do. Um, the meeting begins from February 10th. Secretary is supposed to be putting down any time point of order is, um... Anytime it's gavelled, point of order, or recess, we usually banking those notes, Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, anybody else? Can we get a vote, do we have anybody?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed at 6 to 1.
Next. It is recommended the Board of Education approve, approve the second reading of the Adaption of Policy 2623, third grade of reading, assessment. All right, do I have a motion from someone to approve this? Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Castle? Discussion? Do you have any vote, please?
All in favor?
We're voting out without reading it?
This is the second reading of the adoption of the policy.
Did we read it in either time?
Yeah, we're not reading the entire policy.
Oh, I thought that's what it was.
It's about 30 pages.
Mr. President?
Yes, do you want us to talk to someone else?
No, you, the reason we provide, uh... We provide you in advance so you could read it. You can summarize it and we check in the early. You don't have to read it word-forword, as long as the board has had time to read it, and then you can summarize it, and then you can vote on it. But we check to see if it had to be read.
Okay, do you have any vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 1.
All right, next, it is recommended that we accept the first reading of our Big Nine update. Yes. First one is 1422, Policy 1422, addresses non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity as it relates to administrative staff. Guidelines of this policy is set by the U.S. Department of Labor. Second one is 3122, Policy 3122, addresses non-discrimination and equal employment as it relates to professional staff. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Labor. Policy 4122, Policy 4122, addresses non-discrimination, equal employment opportunity as it relates to support staff. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Labor. Policy 2260, addresses non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunities as it relates to students in educational settings. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Education. Policy 1662, addresses anti-harassment as it relates to administrative staff. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Justice. Policy 3362, addresses anti-harassment as it relates to professional staff. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Justice. Policy 4362, addresses anti-harassment as it relates to support staff. The guidelines of this policy are set by the U.S. Department of Justice. Policy 5517, addresses anti-harassment as it relates to students. The policy outlines the definition of various types of harassment and the complaint procedure and processes. And last, Policy 5517.02, addresses sexual violence as it relates to students. The policy outlines the definition of sexual violence and the complaint procedure and processes. Action is now required for the second reading. So I think this fulfills that exactly. It is recommended by the Board of Education to approve a three-year lease from CH&amp;H Ultra for additional bus transport high school students. Does someone have this motion? Thank you. Ms. Scott, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, this one, let's do a roll call, folks. There's no mistakes.
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Ah?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 1.
Next is the Human Resource Report. Under new hire, we have done resignations of Deborah John, Alicia Robinette, termination of Jack Mitchell, retirement of Carmen Rice. It is recommended the Board of Education accepts the personnel report from Madison District Public Schools as presented. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ah. Discussion? All right, should we get a, do we have any vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 1.
All right, next on the agenda is the Business Office Approval of amended monthly expenditures. It's recommended that the Board of Education approves the monthly expenditures totaling $1,201,600. a monthly expenditures total of $1,201,631.17. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. Discussion?
Dr. Hill, can you please tell me, page seven, Open Schools, invoice date 11/25/2019. Description says return of unspent grant fund, $16,993.53. Can you explain that to me?
Okay, what that is is the budget that was set for GSRP-related transportation expenses. The budget was set earlier in the year and it only has an amendment window that extends so far. So what they ask is, Open Schools asked us to project the amount that we're going to spend on GSRP transportation. We didn't need that amount and so we ended up having to give back $16,933. So when the budget was originally set, you know, you have to spend what you have projected and the district was not able to spend that amount of money in that particular category. So we had to return that funding to Open Schools.
And I'm sorry, what was that grant fund money for?
GSRP transportation. So that means we have to, it was projected that we were going to spend one amount for GSRP transportation. The district did not spend that amount of money in GSRP transportation. So that money is returned back to Open Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. President?
All right, I have a question on the check registry. I don't know who's going to answer, so I'll just ask it. And I see on page eight, line number 400439, you have a check, Paul Rogers, for legal services. For September, it says. I would like to know, when was this invoice given to us?
Okay, on this check registry, the invoice date is for, I see the invoice date is January 31, 2020, for legal services for Paul Rogers.
That was the date we received the invoice?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I received an email with the invoice on February 12, 2020.
I believe it was in our, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I believe it was in our October meeting, October 7th or 8th? No, 18th? Where we made a motion that we would not accept any invoices from Dr. Rogers after October 25th. And it was approved. So I just kind of would like to know why we're receiving invoices in February?
I don't know if Dr. Rogers actually notified him. I don't know if he was.
Yeah, so I sent, Mr. President? I sent him an email. I also sent him a registered packet with all the invoicing and the letter. It came back, returned to sender. I have the documentation for it. It's in my office. And so I just, all I could do is go based on this invoice. We're obligated to pay. Remember, we had this discussion with Source where they were sending invoices from before. It was for services rendered and he claims he was not notified by the district. I have different information. I don't want to argue. So I just ordered the invoice to be paid.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So am I, we're saying this check has already been sent?
No.
Has not been sent, okay. So I would, I mean, he gave us pretty deep, he gave us a list of dates where, in the original invoices, back in October. Is that the same kind of invoice we got in February? Or was it a repeated one we had? I mean, I guess I'm just kind of questioning how we're still paying. What I thought, we had all the invoices, we were supposed to have them by October 25th and now we're still paying the check.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President?
From the motion that you guys passed, he never sent us a final invoice, Bill. We just received that in February. So when you made that motion to terminate the services or eliminate services, he never sent us a final invoice. So he would still do that final invoice. I couldn't control when the invoice was sent. But it was for services rendered. He is not providing services to us, nor has he provided services to us from the time that you made the motion.
Okay, Mr. President, I don't know how we handled it with Source, but I think it's worth looking.
We paid him. That's how we handled with Source, even six months later, right?
All right, so can I finish, please?
Sure.
I think what we did was we went back and relooked at the invoices. We didn't just pay them. We went back and looked at and made sure we weren't paying them twice or making sure, I'd like to make sure that this wasn't part of the same invoice that we got in October.
I'd like to.
Mr. Mike?
Mr. President?
Yes.
You can remove that from the check registry if you want us to explore. You can make a motion to remove that from the check register. We've not sent it out. So the board could take action. And if you want us to explore and do more researching, do well. If you take action on it, we'll do that.
I think I'd like the board to make that decision.
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that invoice? I requested it. I need to get a whole lot of time to look at it. But I'll pass it down to you so you can take a look at it. It's much different than the last one we got. It's a little more organized.
This is for February?
Yeah. I have not had a chance to check on any dates or anything.
Excuse me, for President?
Well, if you want to. Oh, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
Mr. Rogers was at the meeting. He said that the invoices were paid that had been turned in by a certain date. He was in the audience and he spoke that night. And I would like to make a motion to take a look at this further before we, I would like to make a motion to remove it and further investigate this. If somebody.
All right, so you're making a motion to remove this from the check register? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All right. Do we have a second? Discussion? I think we just had discussion. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Ah?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
No.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed at 6 to 1.
All right, now if we get back to the motion in front of us for the remainder of the check register. Do we have any further discussion? No? Do we get any vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 1.
Okay, yeah, we're on public fund of house. People fill out a slip of paper to make comments. And if you noticed on the back, there are some prohibited things on here. I hope everyone's read them. But let's go ahead and get started with Mr. Brown.
Okay, so I just wanted to address the $42,000 I was in the Madison Community Foundation Fund that we ran for a couple of years that I was a part of. I was just wondering when that money was going to be dispersed to the kids or the accounts were going to be set up for the kids in the district. My son's a junior. I have some nephews in the district as well and some nieces. And nobody's got any kind of notification of how much money's in their account. So I was wondering if we could get an update on that. Also, just with the decrease in enrollment, we're just curious what kind of actions or measures we'll be taking to try to increase the enrollment. Also, last year around this time, I believe that Mrs. Holder brought up the additional insurance that I know that we acted on since last March for athletes. And my son just so happened to break his leg or break a foot during basketball practice. And I have a medical bill. And I was just wondering, do I send that to the person in charge of athletics? Or does that come to the superintendent's office? If I could, if somebody could please look into that for me and contact me, I'd be greatly appreciative for that. Also, it's come to my attention that we have a current board member who has posted some things regarding Muslims online. And I'm not real sure how that is something that, you know, we can tolerate as a Board of Education. I'm not real sure how that is looked at as something that's positive for our district. I just, I don't understand that. I don't know how somebody could represent the children of this district, especially when we have Muslim students here. And it'd be okay. Thank you.
Do we have a way of contacting you about that stuff? Because you didn't leave an email or, I'm sure you still have a phone?
I may as well.
All right, I'm going to give that one to you.
Thank you.
Second, let's go with Lisa Erst.
Hi, I'm here again. I was here about a year ago. I have my son, Chauncey, who's an adult now. But I'm still taking care of medical bills that he has sustained from playoff game. I came to you guys and the ladies up there, everybody assured me that I'd be contacted, just before Mr. Kimball, you too, that I'd be contacted in regards to this. It's been over a year. I've never gotten a text, a phone call, email, anything. I've called Angel maybe five times on a cell phone just so Angel stays to call me if that nothing happened. The bills still here that it's in his collection because I told them that you guys were working with me. Since then, my insurance company did pay a little bit, but not the whole thing. So it was 8 something and now it's 575. Angel gave me some really good advice after the last meeting I was here a year ago. And he said I should come and motion or ask you to motion to pay for this. So I don't know how to do that, but this is going to end up going to collection. It's been since Jimmy, when Willie and Jackson? November of 19, 18? It was 18. November of 18 is when he broke his hand. So I really don't know what to say. I also haven't heard, again, Jimmy kind of beat me to the punch, but we got to get some insurance on these athletes. My son Seth broke his leg at L.A. there just this fall. True story, not a question asked. I mean, you know, the coach didn't reach out to me. But everybody else paid everything. I didn't have any copay problems, no bills. There was no problem at all. So there's definitely like something missing. So I would like to know, can we handle this? Or, I mean, I don't want to sit on this anymore. Can I get an answer tonight? It's been over a year.
Get your email address on there, so.
Angel, yeah, everybody's got my email. But I haven't heard back. I mean, I've listened to them now. I don't want to, no offense, there's some people that's basically, I don't want to wait. Oh, we'll get back with you. I waited a year and a month. I mean, and I think that's even longer I waited. But I'm just going to say I know it's been a year and a month.
We'll get back to this. Allow me to get with legal, SECSA. When you get an answer for whatever they try to get, I'll share it with you.
Can you guys check your meeting minutes or something? Because I was told that this was going to get paid, that you guys were helping me. So I don't know why, I mean, get back and say that's fine, but maybe somebody can check the minutes too. Because, and Angel, you pulled me aside over here. And you said, you know, go to the board meeting. If you don't hear anything, go to a board meeting and ask them to pay it. So here I am, asking you to pay it. My son, Lance, he took, you know, it was a big part of taking this team to states and districts and everything. He sacrificed his hand. He's still losing it. You know, he's going to have pain in it forever probably because it's a broken bone. He'd wear cash for six weeks.
We will get back to you.
SECSA does not cover it. You have to have the additional insurance that Mrs. Holder talked about last year. SECSA won't cover it.
All right, Steve, so we.
Good evening. My name is Sakes. Leaving two more questions. I'm a former board member. I had the superintendent give me an interim tag last year. And I was just wondering why there was not a process set up to have a hiring committee to interview three or four candidates for the job. I know they asked me, this holder, myself, I've been on the board. We did hold that kind of process. I feel it takes away from some of the strengths that we need as a superintendent in the district. And it goes back to this whole board, three of the members running for their seats right now on transparency and corruption. And I believe not interviewing three or four candidates for a superintendent's job is crucial to the importance of the district. My other question, someone would like to answer it, is the property that the school district purchased on 11 Mile. That's the school for $35,000. It was held by Century 21 as the listing agent where Mr. Kimball has associates, people he sits on the board with, that he uses a black Sprinter van for election time that is parked in the parking lot. And I just, I mean, an ounce of impropriety should be something that we even should have had to contest here for years that you contested, that people were on the cake and doing corrupt things when it came to buying and selling real estate. I think that's something that we should have just stayed away from entirely from a district that is claiming the last eight to nine months that we're losing money and we're out here spending up property. So these are just some of the things that I have questions about. And we had more board meetings to address some other things that are coming up in the district. It's very easy as a district to cut programs, lay off people, fire people. It's real easy to do that. But the real problem is, how are you going to get kids back in the district? And how are you going to keep teaching raises? And how are you going to keep good talent in the district? So instead of just making all these cuts, you guys need to get together as a group and figure out a way to get more money in the district without selling it off piece by piece that you've been doing over the last year and a half. Thank you.
All right, let's go with Mr. Mike Whitaker.
First of all, I shouldn't even be up here. I have two requests and one question for Mr. Kimball. The first request, I would like to request a public apology from each of the board members and the superintendent regarding Mr. Kimball's actions at December 2nd meeting and January 13, I believe. Where the, December 2nd, he had asked Mrs. Scott, why? Are you quitting now? Twice he asked her. They got me thrown out. And then the next, the 13th of January, she was holding four times to shut them up. I don't see how. I don't see how he's sitting up here showing up. I would also like via email, personal apologies by each and every one of you, including the superintendent, to Mr. Scott, A.S.M.B. And if possible, I would like to be supplied with that email also. Reason being, shut your mouth four times? Are you quitting two times? I'm glad, Mr. Kimball. Finally, the evening of December 2nd, 2019, after the meeting, me and Mr. Kimball just happened to walk in side by side out of our vehicles in the parking lot. Kimball states, he says, well, why do I have to beg to differ with you on this one in the same breath? I hope you're ready for this, off the cuff. I'm questioning you, sir. You are alive. You are alive. You are alive. You are alive. I'm here, I'm ready, and I will see you all in November if you think it. You are lying, Mark. You are lying. You are lying. I'm sitting here all night because you know what? You are lying. You are lying. Your time is limited, don't lie. You're lying.
All right, let's go with Renee Morris.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Renee Morris. I was born in this community. I was raised in this community, and I stay in this community. But I have a cure about me. I'm here to make you aware of some of the things that students at the elementary school are doing. As Mr. Duhon already said, they started a student council program. They also are, Madison Bieber, our third grade, one of our third grade students, created a kindness club to teach students and adults the value of kindness. The fourth and fifth grade classes that have the student council are doing a sock drive to give brand new socks for the homeless. And the entire school is doing jump ropes for heart, for the Heart Association. I'm extremely proud of our baby eagles. These children are helping our community. Now it's our job to help our children. Thank you.
Hello, Board of Education. I am requesting that the president position be reconsidered and another member of the board be appointed as president. There are qualities that are imperative to possess other than intelligence, in my opinion, and the opinion of the M.D.S. Those qualities are: be unbiased and keep emotions in check. Advocate for the public school system and be responsive to community, this includes parents. Handle audience out of order fairly and not favor people that support personal agendas. All board members are treated as equal. The Board of Education is not a dictatorship. Consider everyone's opinion. No hidden agendas. Be objective. Focus on the governing of the district and not the day-to-day operations. Do not micromanage. Practice what you preach and lead by the example. Support and enforce final decision of the board. Shine a positive light on the district. Respect others. Handle conflicts. My question is, how is this possible? The board president is usually part of a conflict. Professionalism. Be willing to work with the entire board. Praise in public and criticize in private. Telling board members they are not owed an explanation or that the decision of board president's decisions make. Using the past board as an excuse for current and appropriate behavior. Consider all board members' requests to add to the agenda. Enforce Robert's Rule of Order at all times when it doesn't conflict with bylaws, state or federal laws, not only when the outcome supports the board president's opinion. Be knowledgeable on OMA and enforce that. Do not make decisions on behalf of the Board of Education. All items should be brought to the board and voted on before proceeding. It is important that we have a stable, intelligent and unbiased leader for our Board of Education to encourage and increase enrollment as well as retain families. I can tell you a huge complaint that comes from parents is the behavior displayed on the Board of Education, the lack of leadership and behavior of the board president. Please reconsider this position of the Board of Education president. Thank you.
I am a terrible public speaker, but my main reason for being here right now is a lot of negative things have come to my attention in the past few months. I can only believe what I see and what I hear. I've been doing a lot of research lately. It's not been good, everything I've been seeing. My main concern as a parent is our Learning Tree program. Our daycare program that was eliminated. Now, for the past three years, I have relied on the Latchkey program and Learning Tree as my summer daycare. The past few years, there have been a lot of field trips, ice creams, swim, several other amazing things that made me want to bring my money as a self-paid parent to the district and bring my money to the district. I recently been told by the director of the program, I don't know how to schedule any of this, so we probably won't be doing any of this here. Why is that? And just because the previous people were the ones who were scheduling all the trips and all the fun things that the kids did during the summer. Now that they're not here, it's gonna be gone, yet we're still paying for that same program. I'm just wondering if there's anything that's going to die to change that, to help the person who doesn't know how to schedule these field trips. I even offered myself, I'll come in and help you. It's really not that hard. I'll come in, even as a paying parent, I don't need anything for it. I'll come in and help you schedule these field trips and so on. Nothing's been said or done about it. I'm just curious, I don't know what to do. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Once again, these are my observations and concerns, citizen. The last time somebody challenged me to meet in a parking lot, I was 18 years old. It wasn't about talks. When I grew up and became an adult, I learned to solve problems with manners and respect. People can decide for themselves what Mr. Pittman wants to do outside in a dark parking lot in the cold night in February. I felt threatened. At least campaigns agree. But the bigger concern is one example to show to the kids in the district, what kind of kids are we trying to raise. People can make up their own minds. Mr. Scott also tried to confront me twice after the meeting, including in the parking lot. Yo, sir. Yes, liar. Yes, liar. I'm gonna get thrown out. I'm hungry anyways. Just don't, hey, Mark, just don't lie to me. I don't say nothing, officers. Just quit lying, Mark. You should be arrested for lying. You know what? What you got for the boys?
It's number two for Mr. Witter. I can trust me. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Scott also tried to confront me twice after the meeting, including in the parking lot, but based on what I've seen of him, I wouldn't spend the time. My personal concern about the school district remains the same since the last administration got caught. How the board efficiently conducts district business and manages our taxes will benefit us and the community. By the way, when the previous board's activities are your benchmark, talking about is appropriate. Now, I want to talk about Mr. Scott from the January 13th meeting, but if there's an issue with this, go ahead and tell me now.
There is. We can't be saying we keep a law anymore. Let's just keep it to a general, excuse me.
There's been more reason all.
Please stop talking. Yeah, we're trying to conduct the meeting here. If you want, you know what? I'll let you do it now. If you want to fill out a slip, you can have your three minutes. I got no problem with that. You can't have people just barking stuff out. But based on the back of that sheet, we're gonna have to ready this a little bit. And the personal tax, if you want to talk about generalized, that's fine.
Well, what I'm talking about is behavior that flies in the face of Robert's Rule of Order and not talking out of that turn. And when you are not speaking over other people and when you gabble and when you're called out of order, you follow the rules of the Robert's Rules of Order. That'll solve a lot of this because then you could have a meeting that would actually be conducted with efficiency and proper, and proper.
We're trying to get there.
So, you know, that's really all this is about. I've never seen a meeting like I saw on January 13th, and I hope I never do again. I'm gonna object to it because it's turning up. So let's just do it right and be adults.
Thank you. And my last question is, Mr. Bigby.
If you tell someone that you like your time, you'd like to be nice.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. On now? Absolutely.
Thank you.
On October 18th, 2018, there was a special meeting where Mr. Scott made a motion to authorize Mr. Duhon to look into a possible bond renewal from May 2020. It was voted on seven to zero to allow him to look into things. Since then, I haven't heard any more discussion on that. As everyone on campus is aware, our buildings need some much-needed updates. From groups that are caving in, need that does not practically work, the lack of security which puts our DCC middle school and high school student safety at risk, as well as the lack of textbooks and technology needed. Many of these updates needed to these buildings also put our children's health at risk, health at risk. In 2020, we shouldn't have kindergarten students freezing in a class while they're trying to learn. Our kids deserve better than this. For years, we keep throwing the bandaid on the problem. I'm asking as a board, what are your plans for fixing and funding these issues? Personally, as a parent and taxpayer in a community, a zero increased bond renewal sounded like a great investment back into our schools. Is the bond renewal something you guys are considering and are going to help push through to our community so that we can get these much-needed updates? It's been five months since this was brought up. I'm just curious as to why there's been no more discussion at any board meetings on this and if the decision was made not to proceed, who made that decision since it hasn't been voted on? Thank you.
All right, let's go into board comments. Let's go ahead and start with Barbara.
I want to thank everybody for coming. And I want to thank everybody for coming. This is a nice, big meeting. We haven't had this many people in the audience for a long time in my vision. And I'm glad you came up to the podium and made your comments. We'll take those into consideration and think about what you all said to us. Doesn't harm our deaf ears. And I would like to thank Mr. John Harwell for coming, talking about career day. Thank you, Mark, as a board member, for pursuing that. I think it's important that we do look at the trades for our kids, for the future, for their futures. I think that's all to them.
All right, how about Mr. Hope?
Yeah, um, thank you all for coming out. And it's been brought to my attention that some people might think that I'm against Mr. Kimball, we've heard with the board, because I made a comment at the last meeting about how both sides have got to stop. Well, I think both sides still have to stop. But I'm gonna stand behind this guy. If it wasn't for this guy, we wouldn't be Madison Hallmark. The state is already talking about taking this over. It's my, I guess. Anybody want to read the three audits from Blank Brand or the other, the state? You know what? I'm gonna take their word over yours.
Who are you pointing at?
You.
Why would you point at me?
Because you want to say I'm.
Why would you point at me?
I had to say I'm shady.
Why are you pointing at me?
I'm shady. So anyway, I want to thank you all.
You don't even know what you're talking about.
Um, Mr. Mark, please.
Why are you pointing at me?
I know. Okay, so if you want to support.
Please don't play me, hold on.
Okay, sorry, I pointed at you. Anyhow. I still think we need to all work together to settle this division. So let's do it. Thank you again.
All right, Mr. John.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the Students of the Month, the parents and the teachers on a job well done. I want to thank the students, the parents, teachers, Councilwoman Kim Clark, Amy Lewis, Councilman Rosalind Grass, Grass Dean, Jenny Wright, and Elizabeth Van, and the Committee for Your Kind Words, who support these last couple of months. It's been awesome. Thank you all. Thank you. So because we had someone speak about gambling this evening, I wasn't gonna say it, but I guess I will. Gambling in Robert's Rule of Order, page 40 and page 193, to be exact. Neither the president nor member should be tempted to gamble through an issue, rush through a motion without any discussion in an effort to save time or silence opposition. All members must ensure that the majority rule does not become mob rule by protecting the rights of the minority and not by gambling through or railroading through any business matters. Along with that, the duties of the members of the board care. Robert's Rules of Order, page 192 and 193, to be exact. When bylaws or other rules of the organization are not being followed or when members' rights are being taken away in a meeting, members have a responsibility to courteously call the violation to the attention of the membership. Um, I'm not sure who I speak to about this, Mr. Duhon or board president. I, after the last meeting, I asked to put on the agenda, goals and expectation of the superintendent and emergency repairs and the policies. Our last state audit said, our last year's state audit said that those needed to be addressed immediately, the emergency repair policy, that still is not on. So it's been almost four weeks. It wasn't put on this agenda. So can those things be put on the next agenda? Because I didn't get an email back from board president, who apparently sets the agenda, and from Mr. Duhon. So can I get an answer on that?
This is the question with the answer.
Well, okay, but if I don't get it, if I don't get an email, okay, well, I'm not getting an email back, so I need someone to respond back to me.
I think if you're talking about Dr. Hill's reckoning among, if you're talking about the corrections that Blank Brand recommended to fix, I think those were fixed already. The per curis, if you're talking about that policy, I think it was already resolved.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if we have an emergency in the school, what do we do? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we do have a policy in place on that. You know, we thought we heard from policy. And what the audit was talking about there, anything over $24,000 has to be prepaid in. And that audit was addressing that. And we haven't had an emergency that costed over $24,000 that will require a free bid to take place. But the policy states that in event that there's a repair to one of the buildings, the policy states that we must bring it to the next board meeting. And that has not happened thus far.
That's why I want to put it on the agenda, because if the roof falls in at the high school, we need to know what we're gonna do. So I'd like to prepare. I'd like for that to be on the agenda and also the rules. Mainly, I'm saying, how come my stuff is not getting on the agenda and no one's emailing me back, is basically what I'm saying. I'm making this publicly known again for the.